Adrian N. Brightfelder, City Clerk, you are hereby directed to call a regular session of the City Council to be held on Monday, November 4th, 2024, at 6:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting such business that may properly come before the City Council.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a regular session of the Dubuque City Council for November 4th, 2024. As a reminder to our participants, you can provide in-person input or virtual audio and written input during the sections of the agenda where public input is accepted. Input options during the live meeting include: In-person attendees may approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any public input on the item they would like to speak to. Remote attendees can log into GoToMeeting using the login links, phone numbers, and access code that appear on the broadcast and livestream and posted on the front page of the meeting agenda. This option includes audio input and written chat input. If you are participating via computer, indicate which item you would like to speak to in the chat function, or note that you would like to speak during the appropriate section. If you are participating via phone, indicate which item you would like to speak to during the appropriate section. All comments, whether in-person or virtual, must be accompanied by a name and address. Additionally, written public input is accepted by contacting the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts and through the City Clerk's Office email at ctyclerk@cityofdubuque.org. This information will be reiterated during the meeting. Attendance for the session is as follows: Mayor Kavanaugh, Councilmembers Farber, Jones, Resnick, Rousell, Sprank, Wethel, City Manager Van Milligan, and City Attorney Brumwell. Thank you, Mayor Kavanaugh. I will turn it over to you for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you very much. We will... Everyone who is able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move on to Proclamations. Our first proclamation this evening is Hospice and Palliative Care Month.
Okay, and I see that we have Levon Noel and Carol Carroll here to receive this proclamation. Feel free to come on up if you have anything to say beforehand.
Good evening. I'm Levon Noel, and I'm honored to serve as the Executive Director for Hospice of Dubuque. And I'm also honored to have Carol Carroll with me tonight. She has been involved as a volunteer in many different roles, volunteer roles, for 30-plus years, so she's probably a familiar face to many. So I want to thank the mayor and the City Council for inviting us tonight and to take the time to proclaim November as Hospice and Palliative Care Month. Hospice of Dubuque is the only local nonprofit hospice, and for more than 41 years, our staff and volunteers have been privileged to journey with thousands of residents in Dubuque and throughout the greater tri-state area. We bring life-honoring care to individuals and their families wherever they call home. Hospice of Dubuque is a five-star hospice. This ranking places Hospice of Dubuque in the top 14% of hospices in the United States, and it reflects the high-quality, responsive, and compassionate care that we provide day after day and year after year. The star rating is based entirely upon family satisfaction surveys, and it is available online at Medicare.gov. No one likes to think about the last chapter of life, and yet, as human beings, it's something that every person will experience at some point. One of the most frequent comments we hear is, "We wish we would have called Hospice of Dubuque sooner." During Hospice and Palliative Care Month, I encourage citizens to learn about their options for health care and discuss their goals and wishes with loved ones. It's so much better to have these conversations before the health care crisis occurs. Thank you again for this proclamation. It provides an opportunity to raise awareness regarding hospice and palliative care, so community members know where to turn when they're faced with serious illness, bereavement and grief, or any other end-of-life decisions or experiences. Thank you.
Levon, thank you, and Carol, thank you for being here. And thank you for the work that you do, but for taking this opportunity tonight to be able to share that message you just did about what it means for people to invite you and hospice into their life at really key moments. I think it's an important message for the community to hear, so thank you. City of Dubuque proclamation: Whereas Hospice of Dubuque is the only local nonprofit hospice serving the greater Dubuque area since 1983, and whereas Hospice of Dubuque's team of healthcare professionals and dedicated volunteers are your tri-state neighbors who have provided this life-honoring care for 41 years, and whereas Hospice of Dubuque provides a service that comes to you in your time of need in the place you call home, in hometowns and rural areas throughout our tri-state area, and whereas Hospice of Dubuque's care is individualized, focused on patient goals and support for family members, and this care brings hope, comfort, dignity, and quality of life, and whereas Hospice of Dubuque is identified by Medicare as the only five-star hospice in the tri-state area. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council staff and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2024 as Hospice and Palliative Care Month.
Our second proclamation is National League of Cities Centennial Day.
All right, so I'm going to be accepting this proclamation. So we are, as Dubuque, a member of the National League of Cities. National League of Cities is celebrating its 100th anniversary this year. So I know that we all have had an opportunity to be involved in different ways with the National League of Cities and with the Iowa League of Cities, and we very much appreciate the work that they do, bringing cities and towns across the United States together. And read this proclamation here. You can learn a little bit more about that. Whereas, the National League of Cities was founded in 1924 in Lawrence, Kansas, as the American Municipal Association by state municipal leagues, seeking more coordination and national representation as cities, towns, and villages expanded rapidly. And whereas, the nonpartisan National League of Cities is the oldest and largest organization representing municipal governments throughout the United States, representing the interests of more than 19,000 cities, towns, and villages across the country. And whereas, the National League of Cities works in partnership with 49 state municipal leagues across the country to strengthen local leadership, drive innovation, and influence the federal policies that impact local programs and operations. And whereas, as the voice of cities, towns, and villages in Washington, DC, the National League of Cities has successfully championed federal legislative solutions that support municipalities and has worked closely with Congress and the executive branch to educate policymakers on the realities of local implementation. And whereas, the City of Dubuque is a proud member of the National League of Cities and has benefited from the organization's research, technical expertise, federal advocacy, and opportunities to learn from other local governments. And whereas, local governments are the bedrock of American democracy, providing 336 million residents with the most accountable, responsive, inclusive, ethical, and transparent government in the world. And whereas, from the nation's smallest villages to its largest cities, America's local governments have been essential in transforming the United States of America into the greatest, most influential nation in world history. And whereas, the National League of Cities is celebrating its 100th anniversary with a centennial digital roadshow featuring 100 communities to spotlight the unique stories of municipalities nationwide and celebrate the contributions of local governments and their residents to our country over the last century. And whereas, the National League of Cities will feature Dubuque on Thursday, November 7th, 2024, as an official stop on its centennial digital roadshow, and will celebrate Dubuque's history, resilience, and commitment to advancing community goals through the league's social media platforms. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council staff and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the 7th of November, 2024, as National League of Cities Centennial Day, in the City of Dubuque, Iowa, in celebration of America's local governments and the National League of Cities' historic centennial anniversary. We don't need to clap for that one.
Our third proclamation is the 150th Anniversary Year of the Sisters of the Presentation.
All right, so Sisters Carmen Hernandez, Marilyn Breen, and Mary Lou Irons. It was written very tiny there, so I had to see it. Good to see you, Sisters.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh and members of the City Council. It's wonderful to be here. Thank you. My name is Sister Carmen Hernandez, and I serve as the leadership team as the President of the Congregation. This is Sister Marilyn Breen and Sister Mary Lou Irons, who are some of the lead people that are on our 150th committee, so we couldn't do it without them. November 13th marks a significant milestone for the Sisters of the Presentation, as we celebrate the 150th anniversary of our arrival in Dubuque, Iowa. In 1874, Mother Vincent Hennessy and three companions journeyed from Mooncoin, Ireland, to educate the impoverished immigrant children, establishing a legacy of service. Over the past 150 years, our sisters have ministered in schools, parishes, and organizations, planting seeds of faith, education, hospitality, and service that have transformed countless lives. As we reflect on the profound partnerships that have shaped our journey, the Dubuque community has been a vital part of that story. We are deeply grateful for the shared mission and support that has united us over the years.
The collaboration between our sisters and the many entities here in Dubuque has strengthened both our congregation and the lives of the many students, families, and parishioners we have had the privilege to serve. Our 150th anniversary is not just a celebration of the Presentation Sisters, but a tribute to you who have faithfully walked alongside us. Your support has been essential to our mission, and we look forward to celebrating this rich history with you.
So on behalf of all three of us, we're grateful to be here and to accept the proclamation.
Well, Sisters, we're honored to have you here to accept this proclamation, so thank you very much for being here. You used the word transformative, and I know you continue to be transformative in the community, so thank you for all the work that you do. We sincerely appreciate it. City of Dubuque proclamation: Whereas, by tradition, the Sisters of the Presentation of the Blessed Virgin Mary of Dubuque, Iowa, have designated November 13th as their Foundation Day. And whereas, on October 30th, 1874, Mother Vincent Hennessy, accompanied by three companions, embarked on a daunting journey from Mooncoin, Ireland. Their mission, urged by Bishop John Hennessy, was to establish a foundation in America, answering the call to educate and serve immigrant children in the Dubuque diocese. And whereas, upon their arrival on November 13th, 1874, with no housing available, our founding mothers were graciously welcomed by the Sisters of the Visitation, finding temporary refuge in their home due to the unavailability of a convent. And whereas, on January 7th, 1875, the Presentation Sisters relocated to a newly-built convent in Key West, Iowa, marking the establishment of their first motherhouse. Despite facing countless obstacles, they embraced their call to serve the Dubuque community. And whereas, over the past 150 years, Presentation Sisters have ministered in schools, parishes, and organizations, planting seeds of faith, education, hospitality, and service that have transformed countless lives. Today, their ministry extends far beyond traditional classrooms, serving in various capacities across the United States and beyond. They address both immediate needs through direct service and systemic issues that perpetuate poverty, always with a special emphasis on serving women and children. And whereas, guided by their mission, they go where need calls loudly, striving to make a meaningful impact wherever they are needed most. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council staff and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the 13th of November, 2024, as the 150th Anniversary Year of the Sisters of the Presentation. All right, and I see Diane Oglesby-Rambisak here with us today.
Thank you, Mayor, and Councilmembers. My name is Diane Oglesby, and I am the President of the Michael W. Oglesby Foundation, which was established in 2016, right after my brother died of pancreatic cancer at the age of 52. Unfortunately, his journey was only 60 days. November is Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month, and our goal as a foundation is to bring awareness to the community and to fund pancreatic cancer research. Over the last nine years, our foundation has been able to raise over $100,000, and we've donated to UW-Madison to their Pancreatic Cancer Task Force. So our goal is to bring awareness to the community, and we appreciate November 21st for Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Day in the City of Dubuque.
Well, Diane, thank you very much for being here, coming back again this year to share this really important message with all of us. I appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
City of Dubuque proclamation: Whereas Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month is recognized each November to bring understanding and awareness to the disease and the individuals and families affected by it. And whereas, pancreatic cancer has become one of the most devastating diseases, surpassing breast cancer to become the third-leading cause of cancer deaths in the United States, and projected to become the second-leading cause of cancer deaths by the year 2030. And whereas, in 2024, over 66,440 people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States, and 51,750 will die from the disease. And whereas, it is projected that in 2025, approximately 650 Iowans will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer, and 470 deaths will occur. And whereas, currently, there is no cure for pancreatic cancer, and there have been no significant improvements in survival rates, at only 13% over the last 50 years. And whereas, the long-term health and well-being of the residents of Dubuque are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer, and ongoing research into early detection, effective, comprehensive treatments, and a cure. And whereas, the Michael W. Oglesby Foundation is committed to funding the cure and bringing public awareness to pancreatic cancer research. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council staff and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the 21st of November, 2024, as Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Day.
We will now move on to consent items. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the consent items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Please state the item you would like removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and consideration. Consent items can be found on pages 2 through 5 of the agenda.
Thank you, Adrian. Do we have anyone here in chambers who would like to remove any of the consent items for separate discussion this evening? Seeing no one here. Do we have anything virtually? Thank you, Corey.
No input.
All right. And seeing none, we'll take back to the table then.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file the documents, adopt the resolutions, and deal with the consent items as recommended.
Second by Farber.
I'm going to motion my Resnick, second by Farber. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
We'll move on to items set for public hearing. We have three. First is resolution setting a public hearing on a proposed development agreement binding between the City of Dubuque and Dubuque Racing Association Limited, providing for the issuance of urban renewal tax increment revenue grant obligations pursuant to the development agreement for November 18th, 2024. Second is Iowa Amphitheater on Schmidt Island Project Bid Package Number Two, Initiate Public Bidding Process and Setting Date for Public Hearing for November 18th, 2024. And third is Initiate Bid Process and Set Public Hearing for the Bunker Hill Irrigation Replacement Project Phase Three for November 18th, 2024.
Ms. Rousell.
I move to receive and file, adopt the resolutions, and set the public hearings for November 18th.
Second by Wethel.
I'm going to motion my Rousell, second by Wethel. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
We'll move on to boards and commissions. We have appointments for the Catfish Creek Watershed Management Authority and the Equity and Human Rights Commission.
All right, thank you, Adrian. For the Catfish Creek Watershed Management Authority, we have one four-year term through July 16th, 2028, and one applicant, William H. Hendricks. I will entertain a motion here, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move that William Hendricks be appointed to the four-year term.
Second.
I got a motion by Jones, second by Rousell. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
We'll move on to boards and commissions. We have appointments for the Catfish Creek Watershed Management Authority and the Equity and Human Rights Commission.
All right, thank you, Adrian. For the Catfish Creek Watershed Management Authority, we have one four-year term through July 16th, 2028, and one applicant, William H. Hendricks. I will entertain a motion here, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move that William Hendricks be appointed to the four-year term.
Second.
I got a motion by Jones, second by Rousell. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
All right, so Rousellina Bravo is appointed to the three-year term through January 1st, 2026, on the Equity and Human Rights Commission.
Next are public hearings. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the public hearing items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input for the public hearing you would like to speak to and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function and state your question, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input for the public hearing you would like to speak to. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Public hearing number one is 2024 SRF Green Alley Project Public Hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Wethel.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Sprank.
I'm going to motion my Wethel, second by Sprank. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. City Engineer Gus Ahoyas is recommending City Council approve the plan, specifications, form of contract, an estimated cost of $1,342,614 for the 2024 SRF Green Alley Project through the adoption of the enclosed resolution. This Green Alley Project will include the reconstruction of three alleys in the downtown area. These alleys include the reconstruction of the alleys between Iowa Street and Central Avenue from 15th to 17th Streets, so that's two blocks, so that's two alleys. The third alley will be reconstructed between Central Avenue and White Street from 17th to 18th Streets. The project will include replacement of water and sewer utilities in the corridor, including replacing private services for water and sewer. The private water services that are led will be replaced from the main to the buildings. The alley between Iowa Street and Central Avenue from 15th Street to 16th Street is planned to have special design for the pavers. Voices Studio approached the city to consider installing the pavers in this alley using a mosaic look. This mosaic pattern was developed by regional artists to pay respect to the native people of the land Dubuque occupies. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider City Council approve the plan, specification, form of contract, and estimated cost of the 2024 SRF Green Alley Project. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? Seeing no one here. Anything virtually?
No.
No input.
All right, thank you. Back to the table then for any discussion. Seeing and hearing none. Motion here is to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Public hearing number two is 2024 SRF Green Alley Project Special Assessments.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolutions.
Second by Wethel.
I'm going to motion by Jones, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. City Engineer Gus Ahoyas is recommending City Council approve the schedule of assessments for the 2024 SRF Green Alley Project through the adoption of the enclosed resolutions. This project will include the reconstruction of three alleys in the downtown area. These alleys include the reconstruction of the alleys between Iowa Street and Central Avenue from 15th to 17th Streets. The third alley will be reconstructed between Central Avenue and White Street from 17th to 18th Streets. The project will include replacement of water and sewer utilities in the corridor, including replacing private services for water and sewer. The private water services that are led will be replaced from the main to the buildings. The project will use SRF funds to help pay for the paving portion of the work. American Rescue Plan, or ARPA, funds will be used for the utility work planned. The SRF funds were leveraged from the B Branch Railroad Culvert Project. City staff have sent letters to the abutting property owners in this corridor, held individual meetings with property owners requiring permanent easements. The estimate of probable cost for the 2024 SRF Green Alley Project is $1,698,406.71. The project funding summary includes several different sources of funding, including some special assessments for the alley improvement residential is $49,156.16. Special assessments for alley improvement commercial is $66,394.45. Special assessments for private water services is $25,015.38. Low-to-moderate income property owners subject to alley assessments will be eligible for financial assistance of the alley assessment for the owner-occupied resident property, depending on family size and income level. According to state code, the assessment shall not exceed 25% of the value of the lot as shown by the plat and schedule approved by the City Council. There is no assessment for this project that meets that criteria. Abutting properties can pay assessment balances in excess over $500 over a 15-year period with 3% interest. Abutting property owners can pay their assessment balances to the city engineer within the first 30 days after receiving the final notice of special assessment to avoid interest charges. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider City Council approve the schedule of assessments for the 2024 SRF Green Alley Project. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? Seeing no one here. Anything virtually?
No.
No input.
Thank you very much. All right, back to the table then for any discussion. Seeing and hearing none on this one. Motion here is to receive and file, adopt the resolutions. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Public hearing number three is Petition to Vacate the Alley Right-of-Way in the Block Bounded by Finley Street, Green Street, and Bunker Hill Road in Finley's Addition in the City of Dubuque, Iowa for Vacating Petition.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousell.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Wethel.
I'm going to motion my Rousell, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. City Engineer Gus Ahoyas is recommending City Council approve the vacating and disposal of the alley right-of-way property described as Lot 186A, Finley's Addition in the City of Dubuque. In response to requests from adjacent property owner Interstate Power and Light Company, be approved through the adoption of the enclosed resolution. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider City Council approve the vacating and disposal of the alley right-of-way property described as Lot 186A, Finley's Addition, in the City of Dubuque, Iowa, in response to a request from the adjacent property owner Interstate Power and Light Company. Do we have anyone here to address us on this item? Seeing no one here. Anything virtually?
No.
Thank you.
No input.
Thank you both. All right, back to the table then for any discussion. So far, a quiet bunch tonight. All right. Motion here is to receive and file and adopt the resolutions. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Public hearing number four is Kerper Boulevard Lift Station Project Public Hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Sprank.
I motion that we receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second.
I'm going to motion by Sprank, second by Jones. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. City Engineer Gus Ahoyas is recommending City Council approve the plans, specifications, form of contracts, an estimated cost of $1,626,615 for the Kerper Boulevard Lift Station Project. The existing sanitary sewer lift station located on Kerper Boulevard near the property to be developed by Union at the Marina LP was constructed in 1957. While the pumps were replaced in 2005, the facility has reached the end of its design life as reflected by the increased maintenance cost. The existing lift station cannot be upgraded to accommodate the additional flows from the proposed development or to accommodate existing and future flows within the service area limits, within the constraints of the existing structure. Therefore, a new lift station is proposed near the existing facility. When complete... When complete, the existing lift station will be decommissioned. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider the city council approve the plan specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Kerper Boulevard Lift Station Project. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? Seeing no one, anyone virtually?
No.
No input.
Thank you both. All right, back to the table then for any discussion. I'll just note that we have discussed these projects. There's a couple on here that have to do with sanitary sewer improvements quite a bit since the budget hearings that we've had recent in the past year. So part of the reason why we probably don't have much left to say about them. All right, motion here is to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Public hearing number five is Broadway Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project Public Hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Move to receive and file, adopt the resolution.
Second by Farber.
Motion by Jones, second by Farber. Mike, please.
Thank you, City Manager Mike Van Milligan. City Engineer Gus Ahoyas is recommending city council approve the plan specifications, form of contract, an estimated cost of $321,946 for the Broadway Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project. This project provides for the installation of approximately 300 feet of eight-inch diameter sewer along Broadway Street from Putnam Street to West 28th Street. On multiple occasions, the existing sewer system has surcharged so that wastewater has backflowed into basements. The sewer is proposed to be redirected so that flows are conveyed with a greater capacity to mitigate the recurring backups. During design, staff identified several deficiencies with the roadway, sidewalk, curb, and gutter, which will also be addressed within the project limits. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider city council approve the plan specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Broadway Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? Seeing no one, anyone virtually?
No.
No input.
No one. Back to the table then for any discussion. Seeing and hearing none. Motion here is to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Farber.
Motion passes seven zero.
Public hearing number six is Ruby Sutton Building Second Floor Renovation Project Public Hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank.
Motion that we receive and file and approve the resolution.
Do you want to adopt the resolution?
Yeah, I'm sorry, adopt.
Go ahead, okay, perfect.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion by Sprank, second by Jones. Mike, please.
Thank you, City Manager Mike Van Milligan. City Engineer Gus Ahoyas is recommending city council approve the plan specifications, form of contract, estimated cost of $840,000 for the Ruby Sutton Building Second Floor Renovation Project. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider city council approve the plan specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Ruby Sutton Building Second Floor Renovation Project. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? Anyone virtually?
No.
Thank you very much.
No input.
Back to the table then for any discussion. I will say this is an exciting project to see moving forward. I'm glad to, I'm glad to see it happening. I know it has a lot to do with the fact that we have a new department that will be housed here, but at the same time, this is a part of a building that has been very important to the community that now gets to see new life, and I appreciate that we're able to continue to help to bring more life down to the multicultural family center building in the Ruby Sutton Building. All right, the motion here is to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Farber.
Motion passes seven zero.
Public hearing number seven is resolution approving a development agreement by and between the city of Dubuque, Iowa and Dubuque Housing LLC.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousell.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Rousell, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you, City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending city council adoption of a resolution approving a development agreement by and between the city of Dubuque and Dubuque Housing LLC for the creation of 48 new low and moderate income housing units. Key elements of the development agreement are as follows. Developer to invest approximately $10.5 million to create 48 new housing units. The city to make 30 consecutive semi-annual tax increment finance payments to the developer. The development agreement requires developer to accept applications from prospective tenants with housing choice vouchers issued under HUD Section 8 voucher program or a similar program that are otherwise qualified to prospective tenants. The project is located along Radford Road and resides within the Emory Economic Development District. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider the city council adopt a resolution approving a development agreement by and between the city of Dubuque, Iowa and Dubuque Housing LLC for the creation of 48 new low and moderate income housing units. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? Yeah, please, yeah, and just name and address is all we need before you start.
Megan Carr, I'm here on behalf of the developer, Wake Park, Minnesota is our office location.
Okay.
Just wanted to say I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. We started moving dirt just this week, or last week, I guess, and barring the rain yesterday and tomorrow, we plan to be out there working again on Wednesday. The project is expected to open in fall of 2025. Like indicated, it's 48 units, one, two, and three-bedroom apartment homes. All of the units will be affordable to those making 60% and lower of area median income. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, Megan, well, thank you very much for your comments. Anyone else? Do we have anyone virtually?
No.
Thank you, Corey.
No input.
Thank you very much, Adrian. Okay, back to the table then for discussion. Seeing none here either. First of all, Megan, thank you very much for addressing the council on this item. You know, it's exciting to see some more development happening in this area, but very happy to hear that dirt's moving already, weather permitting, of course. You know, I just want to call everybody's attention back to something that we passed earlier in the consent agenda, which was a new creating housing opportunities brochure that the staff updates every time that we talk about new housing units. 2,402 total lots and units have been proposed and are in some stage of development so far since we passed housing incentives in the last couple of years. It is exciting, and 392 of those are affordable units. So I know that I, for one, am very excited to continue to see development. We need housing units so badly, and I'm thankful when developers step up to do this, but then also just to see this growth in the city of Dubuque has been very exciting. So thank you very much. Okay. The motion here is to receive and file, adopt this resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
That motion passes seven zero.
Public hearing number eight is public hearing to approve the revised administrative plan for the housing choice voucher program.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second. Motion by Jones, second by Resnick. Mike, please.
Thank you, City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Housing and Community Development Director Alexis Steger is recommending city council approve the revised administrative plan for the housing choice voucher program. The Housing Commission reviewed and approved the revised administrative plan on October 22nd, 2024. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider city council approve the revised administrative plan for the housing choice voucher program. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? Seeing no one here, anyone virtually?
No.
Thank you.
No input.
Thank you very much. All right, back to the table then for any discussion. Mr. Resnick.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. So, Mr. Van Milligan, your memo mentioned that we're trying to take the advice from federal statutes, federal regulations, guidance issued by HUD, state law, local policy, there's a lot of people there. And I just wondered if there's any conflicts between the authorities and the recommendations because we've been caught in the middle of this type of situation before. Is the situation copacetic with all the organizations we've talked about, talked to?
Good evening, Alexis Steger, Housing and Community Development Director. Yeah, this specific one is pretty non-controversial in any of the laws. They don't supersede each other. The changes in this one is the small area market rate that we're using. We've been using it for a while, and HUD made a change on how you adopt it in your admin plan. So it's really just some wording change to match the federal regulation, and those market rates don't come into play in state law or others. It does actually help us in some of our low-income areas that we couldn't get vouchers in previously because we get to use the area of like the zip codes. And so that's what this update does is continues to allow us to use 52002 and different rent rates for that versus 52003 in different areas of the city.
I see. How does this change reflect, you know, affect the program funding, if at all? Does it have any connection with, you know, our ability to fund the program?
Currently, we've been using the small area FMR for the past five years. Rent rates in general have been going up. This allows us to use the 120% of the fair market rents, which we were using all this last year. Currently, not a budget issue, however, HUD changes our budget kind of on a regular basis, so we do keep an eye on that. If it does become an issue for funding vouchers, HUD can make us take a change back to the 110% or 100% of the fair market rent. We haven't seen that happen across the nation at all, but HUD is unpredictable.
Right, so if this change would happen, would it be on the basis of our recommend, our asking for that, or would they just say, we see the numbers and we recommend this?
We usually try to get ahead of it and recommend it to HUD. They're usually a few months later on the data, so we have our data real time, and we usually are the ones that are requesting the change.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, Ms. Wethel.
When you said that just now, I'm curious, did you, did you mean that HUD will then keep track of the issuance of the HUD, the vouchers, and they may send us back to the 110% if we do not issue our full voucher allotment? Is that?
So they look at our budget on a monthly basis to see what we're spending each month and to see if we're going to meet our annual target. At 120%, they start looking at, are you utilizing your vouchers? And are you going over because you're paying more in rent to get into areas that are out of poverty? So they just keep an eye on it to make sure that you're not exceeding it when you are issuing vouchers. If we do, and there's no other remedy, and rents are going too high or something happens, then they can have you go back to the 110.
Thank you for clarifying. I also, Mr. Mayor, just would like to thank our Housing Commission for the work they do. I don't think our commissioners always get the feedback that we really appreciate all the time and effort they spend, so would like to thank them all.
Thank you. Any others? Thank you, Alexis. All right, well, motion here is to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
We'll move on to public input. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting may address the city council on the action items on the agenda or on matters under the control of the city council. For all in-person attendees, please approach the podium and state your name and address when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes, and the overall public input period is limited to 30 minutes. Under the Iowa Open Meetings Law, the city council can take no formal action on comments given during public input or that do not relate to the action items on the agenda.
Thank you, Adrian. I see we have public input this evening, so please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Dan Walsh. I live at 1219 Arrowhead Drive in Dubuque. I am a senior vice president of commercial banking at Capra Bank here in Dubuque. In addition to that, I also serve as chair of the Holy Family Catholic Schools Board of Education. I'm the treasurer of Greater Dubuque Development Corporation, so one of that guy's bosses. I'm a board member of the Boys and Girls Club of Greater Dubuque and serve as the Dubuque Campaign co-chair for the Iowa College Foundation. I'm a banker by trade, but I don't look at that as my job, I look at it as my vocation. But my vocation allows me to make a positive change in my community through my time, my talent, and my treasure. I've been doing this now for 21 years, and what I've noticed in the last five years, which I think it's no surprise, is we've seen a lot of change in the financial landscape, particularly with the sale of American Trust and Savings Bank five years ago to Midwest One Bank, with the move of the corporate headquarters of HTLF to Denver about two years ago, and the pending sale of HTLF to United Missouri Bank here, which is expected to close sometime in the first quarter of 2025. I'm fortunate to be on this team now for two years. I was employee number three of Capra Bank and just about to hit my two-year anniversary and excited about what we're going to be doing for the Dubuque area business community, municipalities, businesses, and consumers. Next on your agenda, you're going to have your action items, and there's going to be a recommendation to award the city's banking services after the, an RFP that was submitted, and that award is to recommend to keep the city's banking services with Dubuque Bank and Trust. Just for a little background on how this started, back in October of '23, I and several of my colleagues met with city manager Van Milligan, along with city CFO Jenny Larson, to talk, just wanted to introduce ourselves to them, although they're familiar with us, but introduce our bank to them, and then to talk a little bit about what, you know, benefits we could provide to the city as well as, just talk to the city about the fact that they probably weren't getting enough return on the city's assets and their deposits. The city then decided, Mike informed us at that point that they'd be looking at going out to bid, which that bid went out in August of 2024, and which was awarded sometime in in early in, uh, October of 2024 and now on this agenda tonight. Capra Bank was one of the three finalists. We were not chosen as a finalist. Um, and I'm not here to ask you to change your decision related to that, but I'd just like to get a little background of kind of where we're at. We, uh, provided a, uh, dispute of the, of the bid that was awarded on several items, uh, provided that to City Manager on Oc- October 23rd. Um, that, I'm sorry, October 18th, that bid was, or that dispute was denied on October 23rd. Basically, what we were contesting is that the response of the, of the DBNT was non-conforming relative to the RFP, didn't include a contract draft contract that was supposed to be included in the RFP, didn't guarantee the pricing which was recorded, uh, required as a condition of the RFP, and didn't disclose the pending sale of DBNT's parent company, HTLF, to United Missouri Bank, which we believe to be a material issue. The city, uh, denied our dispute, um, but as part of that did not provide any, uh, in its response, the efforts that the city was making or the DBNT was making to cure these non-material variances in DBNT's response. What we saw in this, um, RFP response while the metrics, and you'll see the metrics when, when CFO Larson presents this shortly, is that this was only supposed to be measured 25% on price. We believe it was measured almost exclusively on price, um, you know, with, with all other things being equal. Um, we, we were not the high bidder on this thing as far as what we're going to be, what the banks are proposing to pay. And we'll own that. We believe we paid a fair rate. But we also know is that the city's incumbent bank has been underpaying the city for years. Um, they've had this banking relationship for 17 years now. The last four, 12 of those years have been out of contract, uh, where there wasn't, there was no obligation for the city to maintain its funds there or for the bank to pay that the rate that was under the original contract. There've been a lot of changes in the financial landscape, particularly in the last two years related to that. And just since with the rate changes that happened in '22 and '23, the loss to the taxpayers on the city's aggregate cash balances of around $50 million is $4.6 million just from the beginning of 2023. These are real dollars, interest income that the city missed out on because the city's incumbent bank was only paying it roughly 13 basis points on average, not inclusive of fees that they were waiving. Now, I, I come to you tonight not just as a banker. I'm not asking you to change your mind on this thing. The only thing I'm asking is I think you should consider tabling this and looking at this from a bigger picture as to what it means, who are the city's partners on the financial side of things. Removing my banker hat in general, I, I'm extremely disappointed in the fact that this much taxpayer dollars have been essentially just given away. Um, you know, we all have a fiduciary responsibility, particularly the people at this table, to manage the city's assets, and, uh, and we weren't paying attention to that. You know, when you look at $2.3 million per year on average, it's, you know, 1%, more than 1% of the city's operating budget. There's a lot of issues that we haven't, or a lot of projects we haven't taken care of because, uh, you know, we, we claim that there's lack of funds. So I, I challenged this group, you know, I know we have representatives here from HTLF and DBNT. I think they need to answer that, too. As your financial partner, they should be upfront and talking to you about, hey, here's the things that are changing in our marketplace and we're proactively addressing these. You guys are a massive customer to DB, to, uh, DBNT, you'd be a massive customer to us. Uh, and, and to not be upfront and, and treat the city fairly, um, I think is, it's, it's just completely unfair to the City Council, city staff, and to the taxpayers. So again, I'm not asking you to change your award. Um, all I'd ask is you consider tabling it and maybe going back to the drawing board and seeing who are the city's financial partners long-term that are going to benefit them. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan, for your comments.
Tut Fuller, uh, 1145 South Grandview Avenue. Uh, I come here actually not for Capra, but as a Dubuqueer. Uh, I know you folks on the council are passionate about Dubuque. I hope you are. You're not doing it for the salary, I don't think. Um, and what I want to discuss is a stimulating topic of a local money supply. Uh, you see, the way banking or credit unioning works, um, rather indifferent, is that we take deposits and we lend them out. And without deposits, we can't do loans. And loans are the cheapest form of capital. That's just like a financial fact or law. It's proven that nobody does more local loans than local banks and credit unions. And the same holds true in Dubuque. We are not an outlier. We take those local deposits and we fund new buildings and projects and growing companies and businesses. Capra was founded on the principle of local banking, and 60-plus bankers have moved over to Capra over the course of the last approximate year because they believe that the work that they do can be felt in our communities, and they believe our communities were wronged by the places they used to work. We were not living up to our promise as community bankers. We could no longer live up to that promise. I'll tell you what people didn't move for is more money because we didn't pay anybody anything extra to move to us. I, I would know that. The other thing you need to know is that there are 150 local families that believe in the power of local banking, and those 150 local families stepped up and invested in Capra. The stated Dubuque's local money supply is dire. Total deposits in Dubuque, as measured by the FDIC, have gone from over $4 billion to just over $3 billion in only two years. If we were a sovereign country, it'd be a disaster. And I think money supply is local and we should think about it that way. Most of those funds have flowed out of what used to be our largest local banks, and along with those deposits leaving, in spite of what we've been told, wouldn't happen, there've been hundreds of local job eliminations through the sale of American Trust, the movement of Heartland's headquarters, and I see some board members in here tonight who voted for that, and the sale of DBNT to United Missouri Bank. They voted for that also. What you are being asked to do tonight is to take $50 million of taxpayer deposits and ship it off to Denver before it gets rerouted to Kansas City when DBNT gets sold in a few short months to United Missouri Bank. That money will then get lent out and support non-Dubuque projects. In the recommendation before you, no calculus has been done on the lasting negative impact this will have on our community. Can any of you honestly tell Dubuque residents that it's best that their tax dollars support projects outside of Dubuque or outside of Iowa? Because that's what voting yes is doing. There's no way I can see that our tax dollars funding another community's pa- path, another community's projects, is our path to a prosperous future. I recommend the city evaluate the good local options they have for banking and/or credit unioning. Tupaco, Dutrac, Premier, Fidelity, or Capra. Based on us bringing this up, I realize Capra has 0% chance of getting this business, and I'm okay with that because at least it would be local. I've heard so many of you voice your support for Dubuque, and what I'm asking you to do is put your money where your mouth is. Don't ship Dubuque taxpayer dollars out of state to help grow someone else's community. Have them help grow our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom, for your comments.
I am Kevin Finke, uh, Dubuque Bank and Trust Commercial Lender, address 6447 Torrey Pines Drive. Um, Drew Townsend, our president and CEO, was, um, is unfortunately able to be here tonight. He had a pre-planned trip to Europe, um, but he did want me to come up and express, um, kind of his feelings, um, and he did write a letter that I will share now. Thank you for recommending Dubuque Bank and Trust continue as the banking partner for the city of Dubuque. It was a privilege to participate in the RFP process and we're honored to emerge as your top choice. Dubuque Bank and Trust has proudly served as the city's banking partner for more than 17 years, but our roots run even deeper. DBNT was founded in 1935 and our presence here has grown through the decades. Today, DBNT has six branches in Dubuque, more than any other bank, and pays more than $500,000 annually in property taxes. Along with our parent company, HTLF, we employ hundreds of people in the area, and that will continue in the pending merger with UMB as completed in 2025. DBNT also is proud to serve the community with our time and financial support. Last year, DBNT, our employees, provided more than $300,000 in donations and sponsorships to local organizations, and we're on pace for a similar amount in 2024. Building on our strong tradition of community support, in May, Mariner Kemper, Chairman and CEO of UMB, donated $100,000 to the Dubuque Community Y on behalf of the William T. Kemper Foundation. We're grateful for the opportunity to continue to serve our city, our in-depth understanding of our local customers and community, combined with the strength, resources, and tools of a large bank, make DBNT the lar- make DBNT the ideal partner for the city of Dubuque now and for many years to come. Sincerely, Drew Townsend. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin, for your comments.
Good evening, City Council members. Thank you very much for allowing me to, uh, spend, Mr. Mayor, excuse me for that, uh, spend some time with you this evening. Thanks, too, for your service of this city. It is much appreciated, believe me. My name's John Schmidt. I, uh, I live at 1075 Bonnie Court. I serve as chairperson of the HTLF Board of Directors. Uh, I have also been selected to serve on the combined board of United Missouri Bank or UMB and HTLF. I'm here tonight as HTLF and UMB, our merger partner, much like I do, have a keen interest in Dubuque. I'm also here, as you heard, because Drew Townsend has a, a trip to Europe, so I didn't want to see him pull back from that either. Uh, thankfully, I'm not involved in the day-to-day operations of banking, but I felt important to speak to some of the considerations that were brought to us this evening. Excuse me. One of the first things I'd offer is that I very much appreciate the city's diligence around the RFP process. I know from previous experience that these processes are structured to, to ensure that every participant is given a fair share or a fair shake in this process. Uh, while Mr. Walsh did take exception to the RFP process, there was no attempt to make up the $126,000 annual shortfall between our two bids. To put a finer point on that, if you think about it, to include the effect of compounding, that difference is an amount of almost $700,000 over the five-year term of the contract. I'd also comment, as we just heard this evening, that, uh, Capra has been critical of the administration of the account. It strikes me as odd is that Tut Fuller, who spoke to us this evening, Tyson Linecker, uh, the leaders of Capra Bank, had the responsibility for the city account in their previous role as President of DBNT, yet failed to change the contract. There was discussion about being local, and I, I do certainly appreciate that. Uh, I think I've, for 40 years, I've been in and around banking in this community, in and around the community as a whole. Um, it is true that the combined entity of UMB and, and HTLF will be headquartered in Kansas City, but it's also true that hundreds of employees will remain in Dubuque, Iowa under this consolidated entity. The other thing I would point out is Mr. Fuller spoke to the fact that money leaving town. I think they have the incumbent issue when they think about Lubbock, Texas, and Albuquerque, New Mexico, where they have operations. So the money, is it going to stay here or is it going to flow to Albuquerque, New Mexico? And in fact, uh, Lubbock, Texas. Still, I think in closing, I would say that Dubuque has benef- benefited greatly from an array of financial institutions in this city, to include credit unions, community banks, and regional banks. Still, I'm very pleased that soon-to-be $70 billion bank, fifth-generation family bank, for that matter, has a continuing and significant interest in Dubuque, Iowa. Uh, in fact, since just the, the announcement of the merger, Mariner Kemper, CEO of UMB, has been to Dubuque on several occasions. As you heard, he gave $100,000 to the Dubuque YMCA building project. Having an organization of UMB's size, capabilities, local, local and charitable bent, is critical to ensure that Dubuque has all the financial capabilities it needs to move Dubuque forward. Thank you.
Thank you, John, for your comments.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the City Council. It's a pleasure for me to be here with you tonight. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to share my thoughts with you this evening. My name is Thomas L. Flynn. I reside at 21475 Girl Scout Road in Dubuque County. I spent many years growing up in this city of Dubuque and have spent many years running businesses and serving on a variety of different boards and have enjoyed my role here in leadership of many organizations in this wonderful city that we all call home. My relationship with Dubuque Bank and Trust includes decades as a member of their Board of Directors, beginning in 1999, as Board Vice Chairman, beginning in 2005, DBNT's Board Chairman in 2021, and as Director and Vice Chairman of the parent company, Heartland Financial USA Incorporated, otherwise known as HTLF to many of you, since 2002. Since May of this year, I am pleased to serve in a new role assigned by the HTLF Board as an Associate Director on the HTLF Board of Directors. I have a long history of HTLF Board service with this exemplary corporate citizen of Dubuque, along with many other leadership roles with business, educational, civic, and charitable organizations located in our wonderful city we call home. Over these many years, I am proud to have had a board leadership role in advancing the strategic vision and mission statement of HTLF and DBNT. While we have grown and matured as a prominent local community employer and contributor, we strive diligently to exceed the highest expectations of all our shareholders, customers, employees, and community with our very best efforts. I am confident the DBNT will continue in its excellent service to our customers in this community with several hundred local employees, several hundred. Make note of that. Local employees professionally working with our quality banking products and services to provide financial banking tools that promote opportunities for our extensive and very diverse customer base across the regional area of Greater Dubuque. Thank you for the confidence that you have extended to us in your business relationships of nearly, of, excuse me, of many years as a customer of Dubuque Bank and Trust since 2007. I know that the leadership in our organization truly appreciates the working relationship that they have with you as one of our best customers. Thank you for your consideration of my thoughts. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Tom, for your comments.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh and City Council. Tyson Linecker of 1760 Overview Court. Um, and I echo the sentiment of Dan Walsh and Tut Fuller. I'm, uh, Tyson, like I said, Tyson Linecker, President of Capra Bank. Uh, two items I'd like to just clarify for a moment here is, um, when John Schmidt was up here, uh, discussing the, uh, decision-making of, and our empowerment at Dubuque Bank and Trust, that was of Tut Fuller and myself. Uh, one thing is, is we founded Capra for the reason of we lost that ability to make local decisions. Um, so those were outside of our ability, uh, to make those calls. And so Dan and Tut talked about, uh, local decision-making being important. I think, uh, another point of clarification here is the local money supply and how, what we anticipate and what we have done specifically with local deposits here in Dubuque that we have gathered is we measure each of our respective markets, Dubuque, Lubbock, and Albuquerque independently, with making sure that those deposits are staying local and looking at specifically a loan-to-deposit ratio and making sure that every market is self-funding. And that is core to absolutely what we are doing as a financial institution and the local money supply that was discussed earlier. Thank you.
Thank you, Tyson, for your comments. Other public input this evening? All right. Seeing and hearing, none? Do we have anything virtually? Thank you, Corey.
No written input.
Thank you. All right. Last opportunity before any action items. Okay. We can move on to action items, please, Adrian.
Action item number one is commercial banking services recommendation.
Ms. Rousell.
I move to receive and file, approve and view the presentation.
Second. And a motion by Ms. Rousell, second by Jones. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Chief Financial Officer Jennifer Larson recommends City Council approval of Dubuque Bank and Trust as the bank to provide financial services to the city of Dubuque for a five-year period. With increased interest earnings and continued reduced costs, the city is estimated to increase interest earnings by approximately $747,427 annually. This selection is based on their, uh, the DBNT competitive fee structure, potential for high-interest revenue, robust online banking capabilities, proactive fraud prevention measures, exceptional customer service, and local accessibility through multiple branch locations. Chief Financial Officer Jennifer, Jennifer Larson will make a presentation and be available to answer questions. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request Mayor and City Council approval.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Jennifer Larson, Chief Financial Officer. I'm here tonight to present on the commercial banking services recommendation and walk through the process that took us to the recommendation. Uh, to give a little background, in 2007, uh, the RFP that was released at that time was awarded to Dubuque Bank and Trust. And in 2024, when we released a new RFP, we were reassessing bank, banking options, including fees and interest, account structures, online platform capabilities, and overall customer support options. Our timeline included in August, we released that request for proposals. September 3rd was when proposals were due. Uh, we did conduct interviews of the top three, uh, the first week in October, and then October 10th, we had a committee evaluation, and then November 4th, uh, which is tonight, is when the recommendation is going to council. We had eight proposals submitted, US Bank, JP Morgan Chase, Fidelity, Capra Bank, Midwest One Bank, Green State Credit Union, Dubuque Bank and Trust, and Collins Community Credit Union. Our RFP committee was, uh, formed and included myself, Brian Demas, Finance Manager, Keith Stray, the Finance Project Manager, Joe Pregring, the Chief Security Officer, and Kate Whiteman, the Finance Accountant. Uh, there were many criteria in the RFP that we evaluated proposals on. The first one was availability and quality of service, so we were looking at the ability to meet current and projected service requirements, the capacity to provide a wide range of online services, the experience of assigned staff, and the quality of references. Then we looked at cost and, uh, overall interest revenue. So you can see on this slide, the top three that we evaluated were Dubuque Bank and Trust, Green State Credit Union, and Capra Bank. So these were the three financial institutions that we interviewed. Um, the information on the interest rates are based on September 2024 Fed Funds Rate. Um, Dubuque Bank and Trust- Dubuque Bank and Trust waived all fees, and their interest rate is based on a 13-week T-bill, Treasury Bill, plus five basis points. So based on that September Fed's Fund Rate, it is equivalent to 4.57%. So that would generate an additional amount of revenue annually of approximately $747,000. Next was Green State Credit Union. The cost of fees was almost $114,000. Their interest rate proposed was the Fed Funds Rate less 50 basis points, which was equivalent to 4.63%. So that net revenue, so that would be the revenue less the fees, was $644,000, just over that. And then Capra Bank, fees assessed of $72,888. The interest rate proposed was Fed Funds Rate less 75 basis points, which was equivalent to 4.38%. And then they did assess an FDIC insurance assessment, which reduced that interest rate to an effective interest rate of 4.26%. And then the net revenue, interest less fees, was equivalent to $620,928.21. So in reviewing this, Dubuque Bank and Trust is $126,500 or 20% higher than Capra Bank in net revenue. And this is a five-year agreement, and over that term, it is approximately $632,500 in increased net revenue difference over Capra Bank. Many times, the city has more money than the $17.3 million average balance that we use to calculate the interest revenue here in our accounts. So the interest revenue could be much greater. We also evaluated on technology and innovation. So these address required items in Section 6. So it was a lot of looking at the online banking platforms, fraud, security, how much online data we could retrieve on our own. And one item that we currently have is vendor account change verification, where DBNT contacts us if we have a vendor payment, and they've changed either the routing number, account number. They call us and make sure that we verify that change with the vendor, which has been very helpful to us. The other important point about online data, we do have three-year triennial audits, so we have to go back three years in data. So that is important when we have to go through that process to easily retrieve that data. We also looked at financial strength and stability. So we looked at some ratios for the three financial institutions. And then we evaluated completeness and conciseness of the RFP response and evaluated those. And then we assessed a total score for the RFPs, with DBNT with the highest points, followed by Green State Credit Union, and then Capra Bank. So this shows a top-three comparison of the three financial institutions, again, Dubuque Bank and Trust, Green State, and Capra. Again, we're using an average annual balance of about $17.3 million, which is typically in the general checking account. Again, I'll repeat that Dubuque Bank and Trust is $126,500 or 20% higher than Capra Bank. And again, over the term of a five-year agreement, that's about $632,500 in net revenue. I would also mention here that the city has other dollars under management, using professional investment advisors, and city staff directly bids certificates of deposits. So outside of what's being recommended here for banking services, we have those managed investments and certificates that staff are bidding. In fiscal year '24, the city had over $5.4 million in interest earnings net of fees, which was made possible by a lot of the certificate of deposits that we bid and also our managed investments. So our recommend, staff's, the committee's recommendation was to award banking, the five-year banking services contract to Dubuque Bank and Trust. They waived all existing fees, or sorry, existing account fees. Again, it was based on a 13-week Treasury Bill plus five basis points. They waived the FDIC insurance assessment. They're waiving deposit ticket fees, and if we choose to have our check stock purchased through them, they provide three-year online transaction history. They have those proactive fraud alerts. They also are very accessible. They have four branch locations. And based on the city's operations, we have many outside locations, like the Water and Resource Recovery, the airport, the leisure services, various sites such as the pools. So we have different locations using different branches that are close to them, and we have a lot of deposits that include cash that aren't just check deposits. So we can't only do remote deposits. In addition, Dubuque Bank and Trust offers elite business services, which offers customer service from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And we often use their customer service after 5:00 PM, especially if we're trying to deal through some issues that we might be having, which is also a benefit. So the action requested is to award the five-year banking services agreement to Dubuque Bank and Trust. Again, we just went through all the reasons, the waived fees, higher interest revenue, robust online banking platform, proactive fraud prevention, exceptional customer service, and multiple branch locations. And I thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Jenny. Before we get started, I just checked in with the city attorney on something because whenever we talk about financial issues, there are potentials for conflict. And it occurred to me that I do have family members that own HTLF stock directly. So I wanted to ask Krena if there's a conflict that I have in this particular matter, and if you could remind us of the code of that.
You bet. I O code Section 362.5 addresses interest in public contracts being prohibited and then outlines the exception. And stock holdings of less than, let me find it here, 5% of the outstanding stock of a corporation owned or controlled directly or indirectly by an officer or employee or the spouse or immediate family of such officer or an employee is an exception to the conflicts provision.
All right. So if it's less than 5%
There is no conflict.
Of the, of the stock owned by the company itself, then there is no conflict.
Correct.
So I just want to make it publicly stated, I am not in conflict in that case. So I just wanted to point that out because it did occur to me. Okay, open it up for discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Jones.
We've heard from, everybody that we heard from is on the list of people that I have a lot of respect and admiration for that are all about Dubuque, Iowa, and community and making it better, and in fact, making it best. And so that's, that's a challenge that we all start with, I think, because I think most of you feel that way. I hold our RFP Review Committee in great esteem. There are experts in what they do. They're talking to other cities all the time on what they do. They published a criteria. They put together an exceptional RFP that covered a lot of bases. They evaluated it based on those bases. I don't think that, I don't think that I have to make a judgment tonight that A is a better bank than B. What I have to make a judgment on is that the response to the proposal from Dubuque Bank and Trust is a better proposal. It's a better deal for the citizens of Dubuque. The numbers are the numbers, and the bottom line is the bottom line. And I think the scoring was fair. And I'm glad that we're, we're looking at this as something that's going to happen every five years because it has to. And a lot of the conversation tonight enhanced the fact that that has to, and we didn't do it. Shame on us. We've been a little busy with other things, but that's, that's not a great excuse. We're going to get it on the radar now and make sure that it does occur. Appreciate everybody's comments tonight. I appreciate the passion that you all come from, representing your, your professional interests. Appreciate our staff, and I agree with our staff that this should be awarded to Dubuque Bank and Trust. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Resnick.
Thank you very much. So our community is very, we support transparency. So these are tougher questions. We've got a lot of information tonight that, I would just like, if you wouldn't mind to try to address it, if you can't address it, it would be great. I mean, if you can't address it, well, then maybe another time, and we can gather some more information. I agree with Mr. Jones in that this decision is made on, on the process, that it was agreed by, and everybody knows it. The information that I would like some clarity about is it's something about the last couple of years that the Dubuque citizens haven't gotten the bang for the buck that they deserve and should have gotten. So if you wouldn't mind talking about $4 million in the last two years that we might have had an opportunity for if we were diligent. And also, you know, have we been without a contract? I mean, we got a contract in 2007 or so, and then it's been just kind of let go in a running situation. And, and the idea or the implication that the winner of this contract was able to afford a no-fee commitment based on the excessive, excessive profits of the last couple of years. Now, those are very tough questions, and I have a lot of confidence in our staff and our, Mr. Van Milligan and his team. But those are the things that, if you could address any of that, that would be great. Thank you.
I'll go in first.
Okay.
Mike Van Milligan, City Manager, and I'm sure Jennifer will fill in all the blanks. I think that the HTLF representatives did a great job of responding to those, and I wouldn't suggest in the case of Capra that they were questions, but they brought them up as issues. And I think they were addressed appropriately and accurately. The, remember, one of the things that Jennifer Larson said about our interest earnings on the city money is what we're talking about here is basically what a resident would call their checking account. We have other money, savings and money set aside for projects and fund balances we're required to keep over the long term, like 25% of our operating reserves in the general fund. We don't put those in our checking account. We have professional investment advisors that manage some of our money, and they invest that money for us. There's very highly restricted on how we can invest the money. And as a matter of fact, the Mayor and City Council appoints a citizen commission to oversee that, Investment Oversight Commission, and the Mayor and City Council approves the policy that they recommend on how we invest those dollars. And it's mostly in US Treasuries and CDs. And so our professional managers, money managers, invest that money, some of that money for us. What they don't invest, the chief, the Finance Department manages. And the way we do that is we do things like bid CDs. And so as one CD becomes expired, we bid it. Multiple financial institutions, as a matter of fact, Capra Bank, holds some of our CDs that we've invested money through them. But there's many other financial institutions that do that. And we have earned, just last year, just last year, $5.4 million in interest. Now, are we bankers? No. So did we know the rules of the game changed, apparently according to the presentation by Capra tonight, about between two to three years ago, where you could get a higher return on your checking account than we were getting? No, we didn't realize that. Now, they mentioned that they met with us and said, hey, you should bid this work. And I appreciate that meeting, and I appreciate their input, and appreciating them mentioning we should do that. We already had plans to do that. So it wasn't as if that triggered us doing this request for proposal process. We had already planned to do it. Now, every organization has to have priorities, and everybody would like to see in hindsight what your priority should have been. And, you know, some of the things we've been doing post-pandemic is we implemented an ERP system for our entire organization, which means we completely changed how all of our operation is managed from financial, human resources, and you can go on and on. It's a massive, massive undertaking, mostly managed by the Finance Department, and they've done a splendid job with that. And they did it without us bringing in new employees to manage it, which means employees that have other responsibilities were doing that. At the same time, we were responding to the Mayor and City Council priorities of employee retention and recruitment. And as part of that, we did a huge pay and classification study. Now, we did have consultants that helped us with that, but that's been going on over the last two years. It's been very, very time-consuming. It just wrapped up last week. And back to this idea of we have to have priorities. You saw a presentation earlier tonight about what's happened just in the last two years with the city of Dubuque getting over $120 million in federal and state grants. To do that, it's all hands on deck. We have to evaluate all the federal and state grant programs, then we have to decide which ones the city is eligible for, then we have to decide on which projects could be eligible, then the grant applications have to be written, then the whole process of pursuing the grant has to be undertaken. Then, when you get over $120 million in grants, you have to implement those projects. They don't give you the grant money to not do the project. And what does that take? Tremendous amounts of employee time. Once again, prioritization. Back to, we didn't know the rules of banking changed. We wish somebody had told us that. They didn't. We're addressing it now. As we are aware of it, we think that's appropriate. We do get millions of dollars in interest income. Last year, over $5.4 million. We do accomplish a lot of things with the employees we have. I mentioned some of them, and that's not all of them. And we prioritize things, and now we're prioritizing this. And I'll be quite frank, I stand by my recommendation. It's the right thing to do, and it's the best thing for the residents of the city of Dubuque. I don't know if Jennifer, you wanted to add anything to that?
No.
Thank you. Just one quick question. I have a couple cars, and they're, they are a combination of local and world parts, right? You can't tell whether, you call that an American car. Can you call a bank a local bank? And what is there an advantage to working with a local or more local bank in our, in our process? I know that, Mr. Van Milligan, you've talked about how money spent here gets turned over many times, and it helps the community. Is there a way, or is that a part of what we do with this? Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that question. I should have addressed that earlier, so thank you. In our request for proposal, there was a criteria. You had to have a local presence that was physically staffed. So it couldn't be an ATM, couldn't be a whole series of ATMs. It had to be a local presence that was physically staffed, so there are people that we could interact with. And so that eliminated lots of banks and lots of credit unions. But it allowed several to give us proposals. And as you can see from the presentation which Jennifer Larson made, the, while we're recommending DBNT and it's the right recommendation, the second-place finisher was Green State Credit Union, which we all know just built a beautiful new building on JFK, has a physical presence that is locally staffed. Capra Bank did finish third. So we did have a local presence requirement. And these places own banks, both of them that are in the room tonight own banks in other states, and the credit unions have presence in other states. So, you know, there is no, we're the, this is the only place we are anymore kind of bank. They just, as far as I know, they just don't exist.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Farber.
Yeah, so first off, I want to thank everyone tonight for coming to speak with us to kind of share your thoughts. And I think it's really important from a portfolio And I think it's really important from a portfolio management and fiduciary responsibility that we are transparent, and this conversation, I think, just broadens the point that we are basically very, very appreciative of all the local and the community support that we do have. If I could, Mike, just kind of take the portfolio percentages and share that with everyone based on the documentation that we saw. If you look at the recap of our portfolio, and Mike had referred to the CDs and the Treasuries and the managed funds, in terms of what we have today, the checking account is about 29%. The CDs are about 54%. And then we have Treasury obligations and other things. And then we also do, as you know, bonds and other things that do mature and give us the cash flow. So I just wanted to show that we do have a ladder of CDs, independent of that checking account, which is really for daily operations, just like you would have a checking account yourself for daily operations. So I just wanted to share that with you. And Mike did mention that CAPR did and is receiving several million dollars of those CDs, which I think is important for us, again, to share the fact that it's not only CAPR, but some of the other local financial institutions that are part of that ladder. So I just wanted to, you know, be a little bit more transparent about what we're doing with our funding and how greatly appreciative, at least I am, for the transparency and for the point of conversation, so that we, now that we do have a very effective ERP system, we will go forward and we will be basically more on top of the RFPs moving forward, how we do manage the fund flow. So thank you very much for being here tonight, and I'm just very appreciative of the conversation. Thank you.
Let's go with Mr. Sprank first, and then Ms. Russell.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions for you, Jennifer. What would you say our average number of transactions per day are with our current financial banking institution? Ballpark number, doesn't have to be precise.
We're saying at least, it could look it up, but at least 50 minimally, most likely more.
The reason I say it is I think of like, okay, I have to pay a parking ticket, I use an app for my parking if I go golfing at the bunker hill, if I have to, if I take a bus, I just think of all those transactions. Would you have an idea of what a ballpark number, that dollar amount is that we might spend daily, working with a different, working with currently with DBNT? We say it's like 200,000 that we transaction, just, like our deposits and such. Yeah. Ballpark it.
We had it as part of our RFP document, but I don't know it off the top of my head.
Okay. Because I get, like, we've been audited. Your department's been awarded, what, five, six years consecutively, like?
31 or 32 years for the GFOA Certificate of Achievement.
Does that, do you think that we get those nice awards and that certificate because of the fact we've got such longstanding relationship with our current banking institution? Does that help? Do they look at any of those factors, or do they just look at the accuracy, or what do they all look at?
They would mainly evaluate our audited financials and the criteria that they require to be included in the financials and the disclosures.
Okay. Do they, because I know one of the concerns was that look-back period about keeping digital records for up to three years. How far back does our audit firm require us to keep our records?
It's different depending on what it is. So like payroll records have to be kept longer than, for example, receipts. So, you know, some items are seven years that we have to keep versus 12 months for some items, other items.
And then my last question, Mike, you might be able to answer this. When we, so we talked about setting aside funds, which we have to set aside so much money for projects, which helps us get all this federal funding, which has been monumental to our changing of our community. Does the feds look at if all of a sudden you start moving that funds between different banks, or do they like that it's diversified between multiple institutions?
Yeah, I actually don't think it's a criteria they look at at all. If they do, I'm not aware of it.
All right, okay. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Ms. Russell?
Thank you. Well, first of all, I think we're really fortunate to have so many great financial institutions here in Dubuque. And I really appreciate the detailed input by all the banking leaders that are here tonight. But the item on the agenda for tonight is the decision on the RFP. And in looking at all the information on the RFP, I think there's a lot of good criteria that was reviewed and balanced and weighed. I also have great respect, as Mr. Jones said, for the key people that were on the review team making those decisions. And so that's where I want to make my decision, not whether one bank is better than another, but for our criteria on our RFP. I think that we have come to a good decision, and I like the fact that you've got all the documentation there to support it. Each ranking and each category, I think, was really helpful. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Ms. Wethel?
Well, I certainly don't doubt anyone's love of Dubuque tonight. So everyone who got up and spoke, I appreciate the investment that you each make personally, professionally, financially, in our community. I don't question either the previous decisions of city councils. I might not agree with all of those decisions, but I don't think looking backward in judgment is fair. And so in moving forward, that's my role. And so I've been serving for two and a half years, and my job is to make sure that I review and reflect on anything that I can do to make sure there's no money left on the table for taxpayers. And so tonight, I think a couple of things that I want to make sure that we look forward in. One, I'd like to know in the future what other municipalities do. We have decided in the RFP, it's for five years that we would ask for resubmission. That sounds sound to me, but I would like to know what other municipalities are doing and what, if they have a specific process, if it is codified, if it is practice. And so I would appreciate if staff could bring some of that information to us, so that in the future, before we start the next RFP process, we really have an understanding of that. It's five years, and there could be different people sitting up here at that time. But my goal is to look out for the taxpayers I represent. And so I think evaluating other municipalities' processes would help us to have a more robust understanding of if we are doing it right. The other idea of recirculation and loan deposit ratios done regionally. My question is, when we send out the RFP, is that a fair question? And I understand why it's important. I want to let you know. I understand why recirculation is important to our community. Reinvestment in building housing, reinvestment in building structures in our community, these are things that recirculation would provide our residents. And so is there a way to, and maybe part of this would be reflected in reviewing other municipalities and their processes, but is there a way to adequately evaluate loan deposit ratio or recirculation within a region that serves our community?
So we will do that. We'll do that research for you, so that we'll make sure the next time we go through this RFP process that you've got those facts in front of you.
Thank you. I appreciate that the RFP process was quite complicated for those who submitted a proposal, but also for our staff who is committed every day to working for the residents of Dubuque. I appreciate so much. You are servants, and you would not do the work that you do unless you felt called to serve our residents. So thank you.
I definitely appreciate this conversation, and I think it's been incredibly informative first and foremost. And then thank you to everybody who spoke up, both contacted us before this, but then also were here tonight to be able to talk to us about this. I do have a couple of questions, and some of them are based on the general questions that we've been asked so far. I'm going to go first to Ms. Wethel's recent question about what do other cities do? I know, you know, we didn't receive that in a list of other cities, but are we, from your knowledge, are pretty much in line with what other cities are doing in terms of asking for RFPs for something, for a service like this one? Or are we an outlier? I mean, just whatever general sense you have about this.
From my knowledge, most cities, when they change banks, do RFP, an RFP process. I'm unsure of the term of the typical agreements that they're doing, if it's five years or if it's a different term. But I know especially in the recent market change that a lot of different cities that I speak with have gone out and done RFPs to get the best interest rate and fees on their accounts.
Gotcha. Okay. You made me think of another question. Why did we choose five years?
Honestly, it was what it was done for in 2007, so we repeated that process.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add something to that, because it's a massive undertaking to change financial institutions. So it's something you don't want to do too often, but you don't want to take too long. So five years seems like a reasonable number. I think about if I were to change banks tomorrow, and how many places would I have to contact about the automatic withdrawals that they're doing now and all the things that go with a banking relationship? Can you imagine how complex it is with a city?
I don't actually want to think about that, no, thank you. But no, you make a really good point. So what was it that, you know, you talked a little bit about this, and you talked about priorities and the things that we've had to focus on. I think there's a lot of fairness in that. I mean, if you just, I'm just thinking about my time sitting up here and what that has looked like, and it's been fairly crazy, I got to be honest. I mean, there's just been, it's just been constant sprinting, it seems, along with a major pause in the middle with the pandemic. But it was since 2007 that we did this last. And what were some of the reasons, aside from just priorities being shifted in different directions? I mean, what are some of the reasons that we haven't been doing an RFP for this type of service historically?
Jennifer can certainly expound on this, but it's generally because we were very pleased with the relationship we had with the financial institution and the service we received. As I said, we didn't know, what, two and a half years ago, the rules of the game changed, and nobody told us. And hindsight, do I wish I knew? Of course I do.
Okay, so.
I'm sorry, but Jennifer, did you want to expound on that at all?
I really can't answer anything. Prior to 2019, I came into the Finance Department in March of 2019, and pretty much from when I entered the door of finance, I was either planning or implementing ERP modules and systems for the past four years. So once we had a little bit of breathing room after the payroll implementation, we went ahead with the banking RFP release, so.
And I should mention a couple other things, because something happened in March of 2020 that turned the world upside down and took a tremendous amount of time. But one of the things it did, and every organization in this community faces, every business, every not-for-profit, every entity of government, and that was hiring employees. So we had two key positions in the Finance Department that were vacant for a very long time. The Finance Director, which reports, Finance Manager, which reports to the Chief Financial Officer, and the Budget Manager. As a matter of fact, in the area of accounting, the chief or the Finance Manager, we made three hires over probably about a year and a half period that the people never showed up, because their employer offered them more money to stay, and they stayed, because the competition for employees was so intense. So not only were we doing all these things, but we were doing it short-staffed. And when you look at the over $120 million in federal grants, if we had prioritized this differently, and we only got $75 million in federal grants, nobody would know that. Nobody would know we left almost $50 million on the table of grants we didn't get. But I'll guarantee you, there would have been a bunch we didn't get, because we wouldn't have been able to prioritize them.
Yeah, and I appreciate that perspective. So there's a few things going on here, and I think you just mentioned, by the way, I want to point out that what you just said about the difficulty we had in hiring, we were incredibly transparent about. I mean, we talked about that every single month, I think, for the last year, because it was an issue that was occurring. And you would bring it up over and over again, you talked about it during budget time, it wasn't something that was a secret. In fact, none of this, none of this really was. In my mind, I'm trying to operationalize this, to think about how to actually go forward with this, but I basically hear three different things going on here, three different arguments that we're having as we talk about this. The first is just about the RFP itself. The second is about the city's attention and priorities, and how we use that attention and exercise that, and how we prioritize things. And the third is really, and this one is a little bit more amorphous, but it's a philosophy of banking and the philosophy of what that means for a city in our community, and how we're actually going to function, and what our philosophy is going to be with doing that, and what philosophy is better or worse. From an RFP standpoint, I actually think that the decision, to Ms. Russell's point, that's before us tonight, I have decided I'm going to vote with the recommendation that the city manager is making. And the reason is, the RFP that is before us to vote on is pretty clear in where the best rates and the best situation for the Dubuque community will be. So that's, in my mind, done. I'm going to come back to the RFP, though, because it's part of the process and philosophy, too. As far as city attention and priorities, I think we've learned quite a bit here from this discussion, and I think it's a good thing for us to learn. I think we've learned some, I think the city's learned some, I hope the community has learned some as well. Because, yes, it has been an incredibly busy few years. And, you know, we had a presentation earlier in the work session about the money that we've been chasing at the federal level, which has been historically high amounts, historically high amounts of federal money that cities have access to. Did we turn our attention away from some things to go after that? You bet we did. Absolutely. And we got a bunch of it, because we were focused and we made sure that we were getting the things we needed to build some really important stuff here, things we voted on tonight, in fact. Sewers, things that, I always talk about them not being all that sexy, but they're super important. And I think that we've turned our attention in some of these different directions to be able to do some of those things. I could talk about 100 different ways that we've turned our attention and our priorities. What I do think is important, though, for us to recognize is that while we do that, it is still incumbent upon us as a city government to make sure that we don't lose track of some of these important details that it seems like we did lose track of in the last couple of years. What I'm confident with in voting for this now is that we have built ourselves some guardrails to make sure that we pay attention, a five-year window. A five-year window is a really good window. I think it's an important one to be able to say, we got to come back and revisit this in five years. And I also think that we've learned that as things are changing drastically, and we start to see that in the financial sector, we do need to talk to our banker. In this case, if we were to vote tonight and everybody agrees to go with DBNT for this, we need to be in conversations with DBNT to make sure that if those changes are occurring and we have variable rates that we can access, we should access them, and they should be offering those to us. And I would hope that we can have those open discussions, because that is what a city needs. I mean, I do think that's what the people in Dubuque do deserve. So I do think that's important. So I think we've learned some of that. We're going to do the best we can with it. I'm just going to be really upfront with you. We're going to do the best we can with that in focusing our priorities in 100 different directions. We do set goals and priorities every year to try and avoid that, so that we can just make sure that we are focused. I think it's an important thing that the city of Dubuque deserves, and we are trying to make sure that we're focused. But if there are certain things that come up, and we know we have an opportunity, and we have to divert our attention to be able to go after a federal grant that we think we have a really good shot at getting, to be able to build something or do something really important here, then I would hope we do that. I would definitely encourage us to do that. But all that said, I think our attention and priorities we need to focus on. The third issue of the philosophy of banking, I'm not going to pretend to understand the financial industry the way that those of you who spoke tonight do. I'm not going to pretend that, and because of that, I'm going to do my best. I'm not going to pretend that, and because of that, I'm going to do my best to continue to learn and continue to listen so I can understand a little bit more about what this means for a local community like Dubuque. I think you've made some really compelling arguments here tonight about what local banking is, what it used to be, what it is now, and what it should and could become in the future. And I do think it should be a part of the questions that we ask as we look at RFPs. If we can put that in there and make it something that we can actually use, I do think it's a way that we should discuss that. Is the money that we spend as a city going to remain in the city? I do think these are good questions to be able to use, and it might be something we continue to explore. I don't know how it will fit, and it might not fit in a future RFP process, but I do think it's a good question that we can discuss. So all of those things said, I'll just echo in saying, I really do appreciate the conversation here. I think it's been a good one. I think it's been a useful one. I hope that, in the end, the main thing we walk away with is the recognition that we are really trying to build a community here that is going to last for generations and be the best thing for us and our children and our children's children. And I know that sometimes it can get heated, and these conversations can be difficult because it's hard to do this work. But I know that we have that capability to do it together. So I hope that we can all continue to stay at the table when we have these discussions, not just five years from now when we revisit this particular issue, but as other issues come up that have to do with finance and what it means for taxpayer money here and the money that the city Dubuque controls. So thank you very much for this entire discussion. I think everybody's had their opportunity to say what they want to say on this particular issue. So the issue before us here is, motion on the table is to receive and file and approve the Commercial Banking Services Recommendation. We had a motion by Rusell, second by Jones. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Rusell.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0.
Action item number two is proposed modification to the Downtown Rehabilitation Program Awards.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
We move to receive and file the documents and adopt the resolution.
Second. Got a motion by Jones, second by Resnick. Mike, please.
Thank you, City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Assistant Economic Development Director Ian Hatch is recommending city council approval of a proposed modification to the Downtown Rehabilitation Program Awards to blend the facade, planning and design, and financial consultant grants to create one $35,000 rehabilitation grant. Increased accessibility to these grant dollars will support the city council priority of revitalizing the Central Avenue corridor, as well as furthering the goal of making Dubuque an equitable community of choice. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Discussion. Ms. Rusell.
Thank you. Since I serve on the Dubuque Main Street Board, I reached out to some of my colleagues there and received some very positive feedback. So I think this is a good change that I'll be in support of.
Thank you, Ms. Rusell. Yeah, Ms. Wethel.
By reading the materials, it sounds as though some of the grants have been difficult to access, but this will make the grants more accessible and more user-friendly for small business. Small business doesn't have people to go out and do this work. They don't have the hours to spend trying to navigate grant processes, and I want to make it streamlined for them. And the streamlining really seems that staff has figured out how we can do that. So I'm grateful that staff spent the time doing this, and I've heard great feedback from the community as well. So, thank you.
Mr. Sprank.
Majority of those facade grants, just the dollar amount, doesn't cover enough what they truly need, so I'm glad that we're upping it to actually make some progress. And I think Central will look gorgeous once it's all said and done, so, thank you.
Thank you. All right, one side of the table tonight, all right, perfect. I will just jump in and say, we have received some really positive feedback on this particular change. So Jill, I know you and your office, and Ian, you guys did a good job on this one, paying attention to what people needed to be able to really answer the needs of small businesses. I actually, I'm very excited for what this means for Central in particular, but I think all over the community, I think this is going to be a very positive change, so glad to vote for it. Okay. Motion here is to receive and file and adopt this resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Rusell.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Action item number three is resolution authorizing the submission of an Iowa Economic Development Authority Business Financial Assistance application by Universal Tank and Fabrication Incorporated.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Resnick, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you, City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending city council adopt the attached resolution approving the Economic Development Assistance application on behalf of Universal Tank and Fabrication for the proposed investment of approximately $4,925,000 for the expansion of its operations in Dubuque. Proposed project would create a minimum of 10 new full-time jobs, keeping with the city incentive policy, and promote the city's goal of creating a robust local economy with diverse businesses and jobs and economic prosperity. Universal Tank Fabrication is submitting an application to the state of Iowa for investment tax credits of $154,600, a sales tax refund of $120,000, and job training funds estimated at $150,000. The city council has emphasized business growth and retention as one of its goals and priorities for the future of Dubuque. Supporting the Universal Tank Fabrication application will strengthen its ability to obtain financial assistance as the company continues to expand and hire within the city of Dubuque and the state of Iowa. The required local match is anticipated to be tax increment financing from a proposed development agreement. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Discussion. Yeah, Mr. Jones.
This is a good Dubuque company that's growing and doing well and doing good work. I think it's good that we get behind them.
Mr. Jones. I would agree. It's always exciting to see expansion happening. I know it's not as easy today as it was a couple of years ago, so this is a really positive thing. All right, motion here is to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Rusell.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Action item number four is pest infestation enforcement, including bedbugs.
Mayor. Receive and file the communications and further move that the requirement of a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting, at which it is to be finally passed to be suspended.
Second by Farber.
I got a motion by Jones, I'll go second with Farber. Mike, please.
Thank you, City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Housing and Community Development Director Alexis Steger is recommending city council approval of the attached ordinance to provide a clearer direction regarding pest elimination for occupants and owners of structures within the city of Dubuque. After review of the pest elimination code, city staff is recommending an update to the past pest elimination section of the 2021 International Property Maintenance Code. These updates will not change the intent or the execution of the ordinance, but addresses ease of use with the order responsibilities are listed. Occupants should be taking the precautions recommended by the EPA, but should an infestation occur, the occupant must cooperate with reasonable pest elimination efforts completed by an owner in all situations. In most instances, owners will be held responsible by the city of Dubuque for ensuring pest elimination unless addressing the issue in a single-family unit. A flow chart of enforcement decisions in this process is attached to help illustrate the process used to ensure pests are eliminated when found in a residential structure. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Discussion. So Alexis, since you're here, I do have a question for you, please.
I was just going to say, on our way up, that I love it how the citizens come to us and give us some information, and our staff carefully considers the situation and offers a professional solution. That's all I wanted to make comment. Mr. Mayor, it's all yours.
So could you actually just for us clarify what the change, because, you know, and Mike's memory points out that this doesn't necessarily change the intent or, you know, how we're going to operationalize things, but can you talk to us about the difference in this and the changes that were made a little bit, just to give us an overview?
Sure. So in conjunction with Krenna's office, we looked to review the code. The way that it's ordered in the International Property Maintenance Code was somewhat unclear because it would go from, here's the owner's responsibility, then here's the multifamily responsibility, then here's a single-family responsibility, oh, and by the way, here's the occupant's responsibility. It was completely out of order. So it just kind of, it didn't flow well, it was less understood. And so we asked not only Krenna's office, but several of the inspectors that have to go out and enforce and said, hey, can you look at this code? What would make it understandable when you're trying to explain it, or to residents so that they know what they need to do, and owners so they know what they need to do? And so we just took a look at it, reordered it a little bit, added a couple of words. There were just less code and more layman, let's just talk about what you need to do in your situation for pests. So that's what the update is today, and hopefully it makes it a little more understandable.
So to follow up on that, based on the changes that are made here, responsibility in multifamily residential structures lies with whom?
So the owner, it does always lie with the owner. So we will always contact the owner with a notice of violation. Should there be any infestation, including bedbugs, the owner gets the notice of violation. If the bedbugs are contained to one unit, it is possible that we would then also serve a same notice to the tenant if they had something they needed to do to help with that situation. And that could be as simple as, hey, we need to be able to track the bedbugs, and in its current state, we can't do that, so we need you to do that. The landlord's also served with the same notice that if the tenant isn't able or does not do that, that they must, for the tenant, complete that. So overall, owner, and if it were to come to the point of the city needing to cite somebody in a multifamily situation, it would be the owner that we would be citing.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Farber.
So there's a question that I have about the fact that it's between, if that situation were to occur, that it's really between the landlord and the occupant or the tenant to come to an agreement, if you will. I think about who pays or the financial remunerations. Could you kind of elaborate a little bit more on that? Because I think when I looked at single-family, that was pretty clear that that was basically the occupant. Multifamily is a little mixed because of, it could be both, and then how does that get rectified? And then the building structure, of course, is the owner. But I'm just a little curious if you could explain, and I actually did look at Iowa City, Ames, Sioux City, and Des Moines, and it appeared that three out of the four of those cities were in the same vein, about two or more with the landlord, but yet it was between the landlord and the tenant to come up with the next steps together. So if you could just explain that to us.
Sure. So Iowa State Code is where we jump to for civil. So any contract between two parties, including a landlord and tenant, have code within the state. And so that's where that falls, is the actual financial responsibility. Krenna can probably speak a little better to it, just because it is a state code, and I know our ordinance quite well. We don't get involved with how payment is part of the situation. We ensure that the services provided were healthy and safe for the tenants, and that the bedbugs or the infestation are gone. And that's where the city of Dubuque stops because the civil code in the state of Iowa takes over from there. So that civil contract, basically the code says, and I can summarize a little bit high level, Krenna can go detail, but basically it says, in a multi-unit situation, a landlord would need to prove that the occupant negligently brought the bedbugs in to make them financially responsible. So that would be between, if they could do that or not, is then brought through a civil court if they can't agree on that situation.
Right. So generally speaking, it's kind of buyer beware when you put that lease together. So just, you know, maybe a word of caution for both landlords and tenants to really take a look at the lease and how that's articulated between the two parties, just for transparency, perhaps.
Definitely helpful, and the state code actually addresses some of that, too.
The state code does address that. So in Chapter 562A, which is the Uniform Residential Landlord and Tenant Law for the state, the landlord is responsible to ensure that they are leasing a unit that is free of infestation. And then after that, both the tenant and the landlord have responsibilities related to maintaining the premises. The law on which this responsibility is based is that the landlord is responsible to maintain a fit premises. And so there are remedies for the tenant civilly in that situation if the landlord is not living up to those obligations, but then there are remedies for the landlord if the tenant is not fulfilling their obligations. And so that's really where it gets down to that civil contract, private matter between the parties. So while our code is going to address who we go to for enforcement, if there's any dispute where the landlord is perhaps saying that the tenant is responsible, that relates to their private civil contract, and we're going to stay out of that. We're only going to be involved in the enforcement and to make sure that the situation that exists at the unit is remedied.
Okay. So we historically cannot, it's a civil matter and it's not a city matter. Okay, just to make that clear for everybody. Thank you.
The financial bit, yes.
On the event, yes, correct. Thank you.
Ms. Wethel.
Well, I just would like to say, some of the constituents who came to us really made an impact on us as a council, I think on all of us as staff probably as well. Infestations are not just a financial burden upon people, but they're an emotional burden. And I think we heard from that both in email and, you know, people coming up and sharing their stories quite bravely. People don't want to have to share stories about infestation. And so I appreciate that people were here, emailed us, contacted us. I appreciate that I then emailed our city manager and said, I really would like staff to examine our code. Already doing it, Katie. So I appreciate how proactive you have been, and I hope that this is agreeable to all parties in making a clear algorithm for process. I don't know how we could make it clearer, actually. I really, the algorithm is very helpful at a quick glance to understand what's the next step. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and I will just basically echo that. You know, I thank you for the work on this and for taking such quick action on this one. I think it, you know, this has been a difficult issue, but also I think I learned a lot personally about what our capability really is as a city and what our role is in this. I think it's good to be able to talk about publicly what the Iowa code really requires so that we, our landlords and building owners are aware of this and to know a little bit more about what to do. Hopefully, this, you know, this change is more clarity than anything else, but hopefully the situation, as we've talked about this, is getting to a point of resolution in the building in question that has been brought up more on Radford Road, because I know that this was the impetus of this particular situation. So can you give us an update on where we are on that from your perspective? Because I know it's not directly related to this ordinance, but still, just, I think, a good thing to be able to talk about.
Sure. Unfortunately, when you see bedbugs start throughout the community, it spreads throughout the community, and it doesn't usually stay in one building. So we have had some throughout the community. This isn't our only building right now with bedbugs. The treatment does take more than one treatment in almost all circumstances, and so it is a follow-up. It is not something that is closed or done. So specifically out on Radford Road, there is still another treatment for several of the apartments, but there's also an inspection of those that we think it's been eradicated from. So there is still that lined up and still being, it's still on the books. Basically, the notice of violation still exists, and the steps are still being taken by the owner to continue those follow-up inspections as well as treatment if anything else is found. It's unfortunate, but it is going to be months-long process when it happens to spread and continually is throughout the community because it's something that even if the full building got taken care of, one comes back and can cause an issue. So we just will continue to watch it, and we try really hard to stay on top of it. We've had really responsive landlords in all of our bedbug situations currently, so we're hoping that that can kind of get rid of and eradicate it quickly.
All right. Well, thank you for that update.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Mr. Jones.
I move final consideration and pass it to the ordinance.
Second by Farber.
Motion by Jones, second by Farber. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Action item number five is work session requests, introduction to the Office of Community Impact and review of the equitable fine and fee service program.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file and set the work session for November 18th at 5:15.
Second by Sprank.
Motion by Resnick, second by Sprank. All right. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Action item number six is new housing projects update video.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Move to receive and file and view the video.
Second. Motion by Jones, second by Resnick. Eric, would you please roll the video?
I love that we're doing that. Let's, let's keep doing that for all these things.
Friendship. Think about how our families have always shared.
That's the president.
I love that we're doing that. So I, thank you very much for, for, to the Public Information
Office for, for putting that together and being able to show us all these, all these projects actually coming to fruition. It's, it's fun to see things actually happen when we've been sitting here and talking about them for so long. All right. Motion here, Mr. receive and file, watch the video. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Next are council member reports.
I'm going to start. Anybody see anything flying overhead today? Did you? Yes, you did. You saw a plane flying to the Dubuque, to the Dubuque Regional Airport for our first commercial flight in two years to a major hub. So, we are very excited. There was a great celebration at the airport. There were some special guests that flew on the plane from Chicago to Dubuque. Governor Reynolds joined along with Congresswoman Ashley Henson. We were very thankful to have them there. It was a, it was a great party to be able to celebrate. Now the celebration's over and it's time for the hard work to begin of, let's keep flying on these planes. Let's make this work. As a community, we really have a lot we can do here. So I'm very, very excited for what's to come. Looking forward to the day when we have three flights to O'Hare, three flights to another airport out west. Then I will finally rest a little bit and I think we can rest too. But we're going to keep on pushing until then. I just wanted to make sure we said that out loud first. Yeah, Mr. Jones.
It really wasn't any place that most of you weren't, with one exception, today Dubuque buried a hero. Fire Chief Bill Miller, who I served under for a number of years, was one of the brightest people I ever ran into in the fire service, highly educated man, a linguist who loved English and loved big words and loved to confuse you with them. Writing something for him to review was almost like letting Barry Lindell at it with his commas and quotation movements and everything. But he was, he let us go do what, what we were hired to do as division managers and, and activity managers. And we had a lot of growth during his tenure and the community will miss him dearly. Thank you, chief.
Thanks, Mr. Jones. And Ms. Farber.
Yeah, kudos again to Terry and, and best wishes on her retirement, but I have a feeling we will see her again in the near future. And then also, I just wanted to give a shout out to the community and red, white, and blue tomorrow, get out the vote and in advance with appreciation for you guys in the city doing that for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Ms. Russell.
Well, thank you. I had the pleasure of attending Maestro William and Trilligayder's 25th anniversary with the Dubuque Symphony Orchestra. And I was a violinist in the orchestra when he first auditioned for the symphony. So it was wonderful for me to see that he, number one, is still here and doing all the great things that our symphony does for our community.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Ms. Wethel.
We talked about tomorrow to get out the vote. But I do want to say, and I think everyone up here who's ran for elected office would say, that we need to thank those, no matter their party affiliation, for putting their names on a ballot. It's not easy, especially today. I think people put themselves and their family out there in a very vulnerable way when you run for office. And nobody does it for just any reason. They do it because they, they want to try and do their part. So I salute those who are on the ballot and encourage everyone to get out if you haven't already.
Thank you. Ms. Wethel. Well, yeah, quick.
Just a footnote, footnote to that report. Election Day is really hard on people that are running for office. It's a, you, you keep thinking you got to do something, there's something else you should be doing. And there's really nothing left to do but wait for the outcome. So, everybody that ran, thank you for throwing your hat in the ring. And just try and relax tomorrow. It's going to be over when it's over.
And thanks to all those who are counting the votes, too. That also has been quite the undertaking. Understand, early voting has gone really well here in the community. So that's great. A couple of quick things that I'll, I'll mention. There have been two great celebrations in the past two weeks. One was at the Dubuque Museum of Art. There was a celebration for, and both these were fundraisers, but also celebrations of the, the actual organizations. It is going to be an exciting project, Dubuque Museum of Art. And I'm really looking forward to seeing that come to fruition. The second is the, the River Museum had their captain's ball, their annual captain's ball this past week. And it continues to be just an incredible place in the, in the city of Dubuque. I mean, it, it really does amaze me sometimes that we have the National Mississippi River Museum and Aquarium here in our community. A lot of, a lot of people were there to celebrate that as well. So, two great events. All right. Well, we do have a closed session, so I will entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the city council go into closed session in accordance with Chapter 21.5 of the Code of Iowa to discuss purchase or sale of real estate.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Jones, second by Wethel. For the record, the attorney the city council will consult with on the issues to be discussed in closed session is City Attorney Krenner Brumwell. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. We are in closed session.